Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 3, 2013 Board of Education Business Meeting. We have a quorum of members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today we have with us Marley Mills, who is a kindergarten student at Funkstown Elementary. She is going to lead the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we'd all stand for the pledge in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Marley. Marley definitely wins the award for the cutest dude who ever had to do the pledge. That was fantastic. And thank you to the folks at Funkstown for making it possible for her to be here. It was quite a treat. Does anybody have any guests or students they'd like to introduce who are here today? Okay. Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there a... The agenda as recommended by the Agenda Planning Committee's been provided to all members. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Are there any amendments or discussion? Hearing none. The question is on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. Approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of minutes that board members have in their packet from a closed session held on Tuesday, August 20th, and a business meeting, minutes thereof, on the same date.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Are there any discussion, corrections, or amendments to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval of the minutes? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. Next on the agenda is public comment. We have one individual who signed up to speak, Richard Magner. If you come forward, so our... If you want, but please have a seat at the table. We allow five minutes for members of the public to speak. Mr. Bailey's our timekeeper here. We won't cut you off in the middle of a discussion. The point is that we don't go on for a half hour, which I'm sure you understand, and we limit our comments to issues of policy, nothing having to do with individuals or personnel. So within those boundaries, we look forward to hearing from you. Welcome.
Dr. Harding, Dr. Wilcox, board members, student members. My name is Richard Magner. My granddaughter Bethany Magner graduated from Tech High as a valedictorian in June, but she was denied the honor and the time-honored tradition of giving the commencement address. We, as Bethany's grandparents, are extremely proud of her scholastic achievements and accomplishments. And we were looking very, very, very much for her commencement speech. Unfortunately, it didn't happen because of a school policy that is being addressed here today. First of all, I applaud the Policy Committee of Dr. Harding and the two ladies here to my right on their recommendation to the Board of Education to give the valedictorian and salutatorian the first option at all county public high schools to provide commencement speeches. I support their proposal to codify a policy that has been unwritten but practiced for many decades in Washington County. This past school year, eight of the nine high schools, that's eighty-eight point eighty-eight percent, school principals implemented the time-honored tradition of allowing the valedictorian and/or salutatorian to speak. Additionally, I would suggest that the proposed policy provides for the recognition of the valedictorian and the salutatorian at the commencement ceremonies. Your responsibility is to ensure that all students are treated equally and fairly. But by adopting and implementing this policy, you will ensure a uniform process is in place for the future graduates and eliminate potential discriminatory practices in our high schools. That's the extent of my comments. And again, thank you very much for taking the time to consider this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Magnus. Is there any board member who wishes to offer a brief comment? Well, thank you again, Mr. Magnus, and thank you as well for coming to the Policy Committee to letting us know your thoughts and your granddaughter's thoughts and your family's thoughts. We appreciate it. We'll move on to new business. The first item under new business is the consideration of a school dedication plaque for Bester Elementary School. Ms. Coltsmith?
Good afternoon, President Harding, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. I'm here to present and seek your approval of the proposed school dedication plaque for the new Bester Elementary School in accordance with Policy FFB. As you are aware, the policy states that the names on the school plaque are to be those board members who were in office when the construction contracts for Bester were approved. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Coltsmith. Is there a motion to approve the plaque for Bester Elementary School?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, the question's on the approval of the plaque for Bester Elementary. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. Thank you, Ms. Coltsmith. Next is consideration of the capital improvement program plan for fiscal year 2015. Mr. Michael? Mr. Rollins? Mr. Criswell?
And Mr. Mills.
You've got the whole team here.
Cast of characters. Good afternoon, President Harding, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. We're here today to share a proposal for your approval for the CIP for FY '15 through 2020. As the board is aware, this is a sister document to the Educational Master Plan, which the board approved back in, I first mean, I believe, in June. And the information presented in the CIP reflects the current master plan. Just a review of a couple items. We do everything possible to address our renovation and modernization needs through our CIP. We also try to deal with seat capacity issues with our CIP. It's one of our priorities as we work on that. Systemic projects with three and a half million square feet under roof in Washington County, it's important, just like with your home, that you kind of keep up with the water heater and the plumbing and the electric and your heat and cooling system, roof, windows, envelope your building, house, those types of things. Likewise, we like to do the same thing with the assets of Washington County Public Schools. And then another priority for us, based on trying to do everything we can to minimize costs directly to Washington County, is we try to maximize state dollars and minimize the cost of Washington County Public Schools. A couple assumptions that we make when we work on the CIP, particularly this year. Again, as indicated before, it completely aligns with the 2013 Educational Master Plan that the board approved earlier this year, particularly for FY '15 and the out years. For new projects that are submitted, a new state cost will be used, $250.88 per square foot, including site. The state kind of continues to take an average cost of buildings and then determines at what level they're willing to support their share of the cost of a building. The school system obviously has the right to build a building at greater cost per square foot or less, but this is the maximum that they'll participate in. I think the state saw over the last couple of years an increase in costs, and that's why they've raised the per-square-foot cost. Assuming we do prevailing wage, our cost share of the state's seventy-one percent of eligible cost, and like all projects with the state right now, it requires that we comply with the High Performance Building Act. This is a slide we've been tracking for a number of years, just trying to kind of gauge what we ask for and what we receive. It doesn't seem to matter if we ask for $100 million or $10 million. Kind of our magic number appears to be somewhere between 7.9 and $9 million. The average since 2008 is $8.5 million from the state. This year, our request will be $7.1 million. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Rollins to give you some specifics about the projects, and we'll certainly be glad to entertain any questions you might have. Some reason...
Oh, you're doing that, Rob?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Michael. Okay, so for FY 2015, we have three projects we're asking for funding on. $1.87 million for Bester Elementary, 378 of which comes from the state, and $1.5 million comes from local funding. This fulfills the $24.49 commitment that we all threw after the bidding of the job, and that's the budget we committed to and the budget we're sticking to. So, and we're right on track to do that. The project's looking good. Picture you see there is the old entrance on Potomac Street to the original South Potomac Junior High School, the Bester Elementary School, and it's now in place in the main corridor at the new school. So that's going to be a pretty neat feature once we get done in sort of the old and the new in that school. For West City, we're asking for our first construction funding, $8.1 million, of which five would come from the state and 3.1 would come from local funding. The local funding's in line with the FY '14 CIP, the county recently approved last May. So we're trying to stick to their plan to make sure that we're not overburdening the county. $8.1 million is where we land. Total project cost on that is $19,740, and I know we're all working hard keeping design on track so that we can be open in August 2016 for our plan. We have one systemic project in FY '15. It's a replacement of the HVAC equipment at Tech High School. All this equipment, well, ninety-nine percent of it was original to the school, and so it's very old from the early seventies. And the cost is $2.6 million. $1.7 from state. The local CIP in '14 did not show a local match from the local government, so we're needing to pick up the match from our general funds, $933,000. So if you look at our total request for FY '15, you have the three projects, Bester Elementary, West City, and the HVAC replacement, and you see it totals up to a $7.1 million request from the state and a $4.6 million request from the local government for a total CIP of $11.7 million. Out in the next five years, we go to FY '16, we'll ask for our second funding request for West City Elementary, and we have five systemic projects we will be requesting from the state and local government. In this case, we're hoping that the county will be able to match the funding for those systemic projects. There's three roof replacements and two boiler replacements within those five systemic projects. Total state request, $7.5, local, $4.5, a total of $12 million. For FY '17, would be the final funding request for the West City Elementary School. We have systemic projects totaling three, two HVAC replacements and a roof replacement. And we'd ask for the planning and design costs out of the local government for $1.7 million for the Sharpsburg Elementary Project, in line with our EFMP. So this is our lowest state request, $4.3 million in the next five years, and then $5 million from the local for a total CIP of $9.76 million. In FY '18, we would ask for our first construction funding request for the Sharpsburg Project and four systemic projects, two roof replacements and two HVAC replacements. Total state and local, you can see, for a total of $16.1 million in CIP. For FY '19, it would be our second funding request for Sharpsburg. We'd ask for design and planning for the Western Heights Middle Project, and then there would be three systemics, a boiler, chiller, a roof, and an HVAC replacement. Total CIP, almost $15 million, $7.7 from the state, $7.1 from local. Finally, in FY '20, final payments, construction funding for Sharpsburg, the first construction request for Western Heights Middle, and seven systemic projects, which are made up of roof and HVAC replacements. Twenty-three million would be the total there with $14 million state and eight from local government.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. And at this time, we'd like to request your consideration of approval of not only the state's CIP requests, but of the local CIP requests as well. And we'd be glad to entertain any questions. We have the experts here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Is there a motion to approve the FY 2015 state and local capital improvement program requests?
Mr. President, I've moved for approval and adoption of this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Mr. Ridenhour?
Thank you, Mr. President and gentlemen. I fully intend to vote to support this, but there's one area, one item, that I'd like your consideration as we move forward. I realize that the Sharpsburg Project is a few years out before we even have to ask for planning money. I would like to recommend that we take a look at that whole corridor from Boonsborough to Sharpsburg. You know, I realize we're picking up a couple of seats, you know, 180, 190 seats at Sharpsburg. I'm not sure that's going to be enough. Might be enough for Sharpsburg, but I'm not sure it's going to be enough for the corridor that runs from Boonsborough through. You know, you look at the projects that are on the books at Boonsborough, in the Boonsborough area, they are significant. They are, you know, they're ready to go when the money and the wherefore out of the market allows them to go. And I think that, you know, we could find ourselves in a situation where we would not only have to do Sharpsburg, but we may still have to do another school. And I'm looking at the possibility of maybe having something in that area, whether it's at, you know, the outskirts of Boonsborough, to Keedysville, to Sharpsburg, where there is water and sewer obviously available. So my...I'm asking you more than, you know, I'm looking for an answer, but I'm asking if my colleagues would go along with this, that we do a little bit of a study to see, are there other options that would allow us to build a school, you know, as the population or a school that could serve, you know, the increase around Boonsborough as well as the Sharpsburg population? And that's pretty much...
And I think, you know, our past educational master plans and CIPs reflected the first phase of a South County elementary. With the slowing of the housing market right now, we were trying to look for a project that would address... Sharpsburg, when we finish West City, will be our lowest assessed school as far as facilities go in Washington County. So we're looking at a way to deal with that while we're... And we still have on our books a South County Phase One and Phase Two, so we haven't ignored that. This was like an opportunity to kind of pick up and address our lowest-scoring facility at this time. Certainly, if it's our desire, the board should look at a Phase One South County ahead of Sharpsburg or in lieu of Sharpsburg, we'd be more than willing to do that. We would need the seats at Sharpsburg to justify the Phase One of South County. That's the challenge we have right now. If it's our desire, your desire, to only have a South County in lieu of Sharpsburg, if we could count on closing that school and having that seat capacity along with the surrounding areas that have maximized their seat capacity, we could go back to a South County Phase One school. And we certainly could do that in out years. We don't need to make that decision today. As the board's aware, you've kind of had this back and forth on a couple of different projects, and we can make that adjustment as early as next year with the Educational Master Plan as well.
Mr. President?
Just to sort of stay on the Sharpsburg, and then I'll back up to a couple other questions I had. Instead of closing Sharpsburg, and I know this is all speculation right now, couldn't you reuse that building, whether it's a primary, pre-K through two, or whatever? And there are ways of using a new facility that would then capture the elementary students. I mean, I think saying that the only option is to close the existing school might eliminate a more creative look at how we could use that building and not give it up completely. And I would just suggest that that would be an opportunity. In the Education Facility Master Plan, didn't we do a grouping of, was it middle schools and elementary schools, that we would be looking at how to prioritize those? And I think at some point, you know, several of us had mentioned that Sharpsburg could be part of that larger discussion. So when do you see that discussion of that elementary school priority? How do you see that unfolding or timeline on that?
Well, I think, as I recall that discussion, remember, we had additional elementary seat capacity, an additional seat capacity project listed. And as I understand, and I think I'm saying the same thing you're saying, we just kind of left it kind of open-ended, what that elementary seat capacity would be, and likewise with high school.
Exactly.
We identified a single line on there for additional high school seat capacity if and when the need arises. And it could come in, you know, multiple forms, portables, additions to schools, an additional, a new school, expansion of existing schools. Likewise, with the elementary capacity, you know, we talked about, you know, West City, you know, I think we've got that project well underway. But what if North County accelerated faster than the South County Elementary or something like that? So I think all those are discussions that we'll be having as things evolve. Right now, we're just getting the enrollment data in for 2013. You know, so far, some interesting things that we hadn't predicted. Schools that are up, we had no idea would be up, and schools that are down, that we thought for sure would be continuing to increase. And we're early on in the process. Till we get to September 30th, I'm not really to make a commitment on any of the schools at this point, because sometimes some data changes significantly. But I think it's a discussion we'll have with Dr. Wilcox, with the board, certainly the will of the board, the direction that she might have. We'd be glad to incorporate any design that we have.
And just to add to the confusion in reading the tea leaves, but my understanding is that the State Highway Administration is getting ready or will shortly be signing off on that road, access road in Boonsborough, which would then lead to a model home, which would then lead to the 105 houses that have been on the board and ready to be permitted. So, you know, speaking to Mr. Ridenhour's comment, my concern has been, and I know some of my colleagues, that things would all of a sudden break loose there, and we would need to be very fluid in how we responded to that.
And I think, and Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those first 105 houses, we've kind of got built in this design and even in our projections for Sharpsburg if we chose to do that project in that order. So the renovation or construction of a new Sharpsburg and the additional seat capacity would be to address Boonsborough Elementary and would take into account the projection for those 105 houses. Chad?
Where is the status on the land banking in Boonsborough? Where are we on that discussion?
So the board's aware we finished the study of, I can't remember how many sites, in the Boonsborough area, and that report's been provided to this board and to the Board of County Commissioners.
But no recent update?
No additional updates that I have available this time.
Because I think that's what, over a year old?
Mm-hmm.
Shifting to West City very quickly. When I, and I'm looking at the CIP document on page 15, where we're looking for requests for approval of funding, you've listed, of course, Conica Jig, Winter Street closing, and six other schools. Can you help me visualize, because I think what we're looking at is a need to redistrict at some point with the West City school opening? What are the tiers of these other six schools here? I know that we tend to go out and capture tiers to justify the building of a school. Can you help me understand of the six schools listed here, which are they one, two, or three-tier schools?
These schools are all first-tier schools.
They're all first-tier.
Yes, ma'am. So they are directly adjacent to either Winter Street or Conica Jig, and thus, we are required by the Maryland Department of Planning to count them unless we can give justification as to why we wouldn't. For a good example of that justification, we show in the bester, there were a few adjacent school zones that the Maryland Department of Planning said, "Nope, you don't have to count those." But these are all first-tier.
Okay. And the budget for West City? I know we had a few surprises on Bester. Are we really comfortable with the projections here? It's based on, what, a 224-square-foot from the state for eligible cost, but...
A site for a total of $251,000.
Right, right.
Yes.
Yes, I assume you put it in here so you're comfortable with these projections.
Well, again, as our effort goes forward to maximize state dollars, we've always kind of set our target on not exceeding that. You know, a lot of counties build schools, overbuild schools, build additional square footage, beyond plan from the beginning, budget even from the beginning, beyond that allowable by the state. In Washington County, we traditionally only budget around the state model.
Okay. Another shift to the Tech High School, the HVAC. Don't laugh, but is there a chance, or have we considered the possibility of tying into the existing geothermal at Antietam Academy? And would that help any cost savings at the Tech High? I know the field where all the wells are is sort of right between the parking, right, sort of trying to think of the direction.
Back, it's kind of between Antietam Academy and Hicks.
E. Russell, isn't it?
And the wells.
And that's all, it's a closed-loop system, but, and I'm sure it's sized for... And that's all, it's a closed-loop system, but, and I'm sure it's sized for Antietam Academy. I know where we're going there, but is there any way of efficiently and effectively piggybacking onto that system that might be something long-term for Tech High to save, be some cost savings?
Probably would be at a substantial expense on the front end.
Upfront cost would not balance the savings.
That's great. You'd end up having to replace much of the, what we're planning on doing is almost a replace in kind with more efficient units, air handling units on the roof, rooftop units. To go to a geothermal system, you'd have to probably use a more distributed system. You'd end up having to replace lots of ductwork in the school. So, what we're planning on doing for $2.5 million or $2.8 million was
Estimated.
Estimated, yeah. Was to take a big box off and put one on and connect the existing ductwork with a system that's going to be reliable, minimal cost. To do something such as what you're talking about, we'd probably at least double the cost of, because you're not only just replacing the actual physical mechanical unit, but you're replacing all the ductwork, all the diffusers. You're having to redesign the system throughout the school completely, and that's not what we're talking about for $2.8 million. In terms of the field, you're absolutely correct. It's sized only for Antietam Academy. There's not a lot of excess capacity. There's always some, because you always overdesign slightly. But you basically need a field one and a half times the size of what's at Antietam Academy on top of what's already there.
To be able to.
I think there's about 90 wells there, so you're talking about probably 130, 140 wells for Tech High.
Additional.
Additional wells, additional wells. And then that's a, that's a long way to pump, and up a hill, so you'd need some pretty hefty pumps, too. They're not going to be cheap to move the water that far.
So, once we've committed to a geothermal for a particular school, even if it's on a campus structure, there's no way of adding another unit?
Unless you plan it that way from the beginning.
If you plan it.
In addition to what Rob described, we'd also have to run all the piping. We'd have to add boilers to the school. We'd have to add chillers possibly to the school. That school currently runs off natural gas, so all the rooftop units are natural gas, which is
Which is pretty inexpensive.
Pretty efficient, and one of the most inexpensive utilities we currently have.
But we do think about those things when we go to, but there's a cost-benefit kind of thing, and so it steers us in the direction we want.
Thank you.
The Western Heights Project, considerable number of years, 2020. The school was constructed in about 19, or 2000, let me take that back, 1975, I believe, in that neighborhood. It's had considerable modifications on the inside. What will the, what will the school look like overall picture? What are we going to do to it?
Well, we don't know the exact scope. We know that there's lots of systems that need to be replaced, the air conditioning system, the, so just systemic type things need to be done. On top of that, the way that the building has been constructed or modified over the years has led it to be pretty chopped up on the inside. There's probably a lot, you're familiar with like lockers within walls, whereas
Some on the inside, some on the outside.
Exactly. Some are in the classroom, some are out in what amounts to a corridor, but can be narrow or wide, or it's just not very efficient. So, we'd anticipate going in and taking a lot of those walls down, sort of like we did in the lower level. If you get a chance to go in and look at how we reorganize the lower level, I think you'll be pleased with something along those lines, where we try to reorganize it by grade level teams and things like that, and really just make it a better, more efficient layout. We'd like to look at maybe putting windows in that school. Right now, there's not that many windows in the school, but I think it leads itself, the design that's in place leads itself to the ability to probably put some windows in there. And I think natural light's generally a good thing for the classroom environment. So, things like that. We wouldn't necessarily touch things like the gymnasium substantially at all, things like that, but in the, in the classrooms, the science labs are very inadequate from what I see around the state, so we'd like to touch those things, and that's the sort of things we're talking about.
We had talked one time about a technology base there.
Kind of like a STEM.
A STEM.
Support. Those are the types of things that we'd include in the design of the building if that was the desire at that time.
So, what we do between now and the time that we actually ask for planning money is, again, develop an educational specification, where we bring in all the instructional folks and figure out what is the best use of the space we have, and then go with the next.
I realize you don't have a crystal ball, gentlemen.
Are there other comments or questions on the CIP? Seeing none, the question is on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the state and local capital improvement programs for fiscal year 2015. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three under new business is the fourth quarter budget adjustments for fiscal year 2013. Mr. South.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. I am here this afternoon to request your approval of the proposed fourth quarter budget adjustments for FY 2013. As you know, the state of Maryland requires that LEA's budgeted revenues and expenditures must equal actual budget, actual revenues and expenditures at each year-end. So, what we're doing here this afternoon is requesting that you align these FY 13 revenues and expenditures with your final budget. I do have a lot of positive adjustments to report here in the fourth quarter, and I'd like to highlight just several of those higher dollar adjustments. First of all, on line one, revenue, you'll see that we have a $407,000 positive adjustment there. That relates to several things. First of all, unbudgeted quality teacher incentive award, that's $163,000. And that's an item that we really don't budget, because we don't know whether we're going to receive that until close to the end of each year. So, if you go back in our historical discussions at this time of year, you'll find that that has been a recurring item for several years. Gain on sale of assets, we had about $133,000 there, and that relates to bus trade-ins that were higher this year per unit than what we had anticipated. And finally, interest income, we had an additional $41,000 in interest income from the sale of investments that we cashed in to purchase the Downsfield Pike property. Moving down to line four, instructional salaries, we have approximately a million dollars there in savings. That relates to several things. First of all, vacancies and turnover, unused additional pay, and summer school pay. Vacancies and turnovers and the unused additional pay primarily come from three areas, regular instruction, we had a savings of about $491,000 there, career tech instruction, about $171,000 saved, and approximately $141,000 savings in staff development. If we move down to special education, we have a savings of $256,700 in that category. In that area, there was a savings of approximately, actually, it was a redeployment of approximately $75,000 related to a position that had been improperly classified in special education for the full year, and we moved that into the regular instruction area. There was also about $70,000 in savings in other contracted services and non-public placements posted, a $66,000 save. Moving down to operation of plant on line 11, you'll see there's a fairly sizable positive adjustment there of $494,000. That was some save, about $50,000 savings in additional pay, and also utilities, $361,000 saved. As you recall, we had a very mild winter this year, and we always do budget for, conservatively that is, we budget for a harsh winter. So, when we have an easy winter, we generally have some savings in that area. And finally, $82,000 in contracted services. That's over all of the various contracted services lines that you'll find in the operation of plant category. Last line I would call your attention to is line 15, where we have an $854,000 savings. That related, had had several areas that that related to. First of all, retirement sick pay of $138,000, and terminal vacation pay of $67,000, which relates specifically to the folks that retired this year. Those folks did not have as much sick time or vacation time accrued as what we normally see in groups of retirees. There was also some tuition reimbursement saved there, about $60,000. That was over all three of our, of our employee groups. And the savings in Social Security or FICA amounted to approximately half a million dollars. That was related to the full-year salary savings that we have talked about quarter after quarter. Again, state pension costs were down by about $34,000, again, related to and commensurate with full-year salary savings. That brings us down to an increase in the fund balance of $2,993,000. If you'll recall, we dropped about $1,038,000 to the bottom, to the fund balance in the third quarter, which brings our total for the year to approximately $4.2 million increase to the fund balance. Brings our total fund balance at June 30th to $11 million. Now, that sounds like a lot, but, and we normally would have taken some of this, this funding if, this excess, if you will, if you recall, we normally take some of that and use it to work down or pay down some of our deferred maintenance. Because we have a few estimated expenditures that are going to come out of the fund balance and, and a commitment for the, for the current year budget, we did not do that this year. Our estimated expenditure of about $6.5 million for the Downsfield Pike property, that's the renovation cost, that was an estimated cost at the time that we purchased the property. We also have a, the board also made a commitment of $1.5 million that's going to be transferred to operations in the current or FY 14 budget to pay for computer software. If those two items come in as, as expected, that would bring our $11 million fund balance down to approximately $3 million. Again, while that sounds like a lot, if you look at it in terms of operating, days of operating surplus, we only have about 4.3 days of operating surplus. So, with that, I would be glad to answer any questions and would respectfully request the board's approval.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion to approve the fourth quarter budget adjustments?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Any questions? No questions?
I will, I'm just going to make one comment. I went back and in fact looked up how much, through budget adjustments, we had moved from various categories over the last number of years into deferred maintenance. And in FY 10, it was $3.3 million. In FY 11, it was 1.6. In FY 12, it was 1.3. And of course, this year, it's not any, because I think, as you said, we've made a conscious choice that really we're taking care of the deferred maintenance bill that we had on this building.
Yes.
So, the, while the amount may seem large, it is consistent with what we've done in the past, and this is the first time, at least since I've been on the board, that we haven't put it into the physical plant in all of our schools. And I think it's pretty clear why, and just wanted to compliment the superintendent and the finance staff for putting us in a position where, if we weren't in a strong fiscal position, we wouldn't have been able to take on the Downsfield Pike project to start with. So, thanks to all of you for your diligence and putting us in a position where we can do that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, the questions on the approval of the fourth quarter budget adjustments, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. South. Item four under new business is consideration of Maryland Association of Boards of Education nominations for committee assignments. I received correspondence from the president of MAEVE about a month and a half ago, asking and inviting Washington County board members to serve on MAEVE standing committees. We can nominate ourselves, we can nominate as a board. There are a number of committees. I know all my colleagues are aware of what those committees are, and this would be an opportunity for the board to endorse those nominations. Any nominations that are made by this board, I will write a letter to the MAEVE president and the executive director, letting them know of our nominations, and hopefully MAEVE will, will go ahead and approve those. So, how I'd sort of like to proceed is maybe if there are members who are interested in serving on a MAEVE committee, if you can speak up, or if somebody wants to suggest somebody to serve on a MAEVE committee, if we have a little bit of a discussion first to see who's interested in serving where, we sort of come to conclusion about who those individuals will be, then we'll have one motion to nominate all those who are interested as a group. And then the whole board can vote on those, and that will just give me one, one motion to relay to the folks of the state. So, everybody understand how I think we're going to try to proceed? Great. So, any interests or what committees is anybody interested in serving on? I can open up the conversation, if that's all right. We've sort of spoken among ourselves, because I think it's really important to try to cover all of these committees and have a, someone from Washington County at the table at all of these committees. I will just mention my interest would lie in the legislative and nominating committee committees. I have been asked to serve as chair of a legislative committee, so it would certainly be helpful if my colleagues would support my nomination to that one. The nominating committee, I think, is important, because this will be my last year on the Board of Directors. I get termed out, and the nominating committee sets up, helps with a slate for future Board of Directors, and I know that I'm interested in seeing counties, not only Washington County, but other counties who have not had a presence on the Board of Directors, to try to have that opportunity. So, I'm hoping to do sort of an outreach on that one. Again, if there's someone else interested in serving on nominating, I'm very open to passing on that time in Annapolis, but those would be my two interested positions. Great. Any, any other? Mrs. Hartsman?
Well, I'm interested in continuing on the conference planning committee, and I would also like to serve on the awards committee.
Okay. Any, any others? Mrs. Williams?
I'm interested in continuing on the conference planning committee, and I'm also interested in serving on the resolutions committee.
Are there any others?
Mr. President, I currently serve on the MAEVE self-insurance fund program, so I would just continue in that.
Okay. And I'll find out if that's a committee that needs a new nomination this year.
I don't think it does. It may, I'm sure.
I'll just, I'll confirm that before we send the letter in. And I'm interested in serving on the budget and planning committee. Are there any, any others?
Just a comment.
Sure.
That leaves to open the federal relations and the legal services without representation. I know the legal services, Mr. Trotta serves, but we have an opening as an alternate, so I don't know if anyone would be interested in serving as an alternate. That committee, for whatever it's worth, meets at Anna Rundle School System, I think once a quarter. I don't know if Tony's, is it once a quarter? And they basically, for instance, the ethics policy that was changed, they gave a, almost a day-long initial meeting on that and information to school board attorneys as, as well as members. So, it's a very interesting committee, but again, it's only once a quarter, so I just put that out if anyone is interested in signing up for an alternate.
I would be happy to be the alternate.
Whoa. Excuse me. Okay, Mr. Ridenhour. Okay, Mr. Ridenhour. All right. And then that leaves federal.
And that leaves federal relations.
No, I'm sorry.
Basically, basically, you attend, I think it's two meetings at MAB, and then you spend two or three days in February in DC. So if anyone's interested, we can always do a later, if we need to. God, I tried again, and it worked the first time.
All right.
Sorry.
Don't push your luck, I think.
Yeah, that's what he just says. Quiet.
All right. So if there's no other expressions of interest, and I'll just read this out loud and ask if there is a motion to nominate Donna Brightman to serve on the legislative and nominating committees, Karen Harchman to serve on the conference planning and awards committees, Melissa Williams to serve on the conference planning and resolutions committee, Justin Harding to serve on the budget and planning committee, and Wayne Ridenhour to serve on the, as the alternate for the legal services committee. Is there a motion to approve those nominations?
Mr. President, I move to nominate those individuals to the committees they have expressed interest in.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the nomination? Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. I will get a letter to MAB, letting them know of our action likely by the end of the week, but you'll all get a copy of it. Item five under new business is a consent agenda for quite a number of bids, so we'll have Ms. Freeman explain that to us.
The briefest you that you can be.
I see that the board does have a long agenda, so I will fly through the bids summaries fairly quickly, and as always, I'll give you the opportunity for questions when I get through. The first bid on the agenda this afternoon is for enhanced commissioning services. We, the school system, did issue an RFP for this project. It is necessary that we secure these services in order to achieve LEED certification, which is, we require the fundamental building systems to be regularly and systematically calibrated, and this ensures their optimal performance. These bids are recommended to be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Reynolds Consulting Engineers of Stevensville, Maryland, at a total cost of $54,943. The second bid on the consent agenda is the renewal of a contract that the board approved last year. This contract provides service technician to maintain our kitchen equipment in our schools throughout the county. The price is, for the coming year, is the same as was paid last year. The vendor is MTS Equipment of Winchester, Virginia, and the annual cost is $28,488. Where'd everybody go? The next bid is-
Don't take it personally.
I'm starting to feel, maybe I said something, right? Zeris Wireless Support Services, this is a contract, we have wireless systems throughout the school, school system, and this contract will help us to make sure that we have the latest software updates, and it's a, it's sort of a hardware insurance policy, so if something gets broken, we have the, we can pick up the phone and have it replaced, and make sure that we're maintaining all of our wonderful wireless technology in optimal condition. And this contract is $67,665.89, with Zeris from July of 13 through July of 14. The next item is a core router for our wide-area network. This is a significant, important purchase for the school system, in that the core router supports all of our many telecommunications and software interfaces on our network. The existing core router's three years old, and we're using a, the existing core router, which backs up our three-year-old router, is seven years old. So what we're going to do is, we're going to update our core router on our network. The cost of that, to Skyline Technology, is $114,077.37, and that's utilizing a cooperative bid to do that. There is also a requisition for teacher laptop computers. The IT department is asking to purchase 100 of those at a cost of $60,000, and that order would be placed to Hartford Computer Group, also under a cooperative bid. We have a requisition to Northwest Evaluation Association. They provide our MAP assessments for our students. MAPs are, simply said, measurements of academic progress. They're online tests that are delivered to our students in certain grades at certain intervals, as I tried to explain in the summary report. The cost of the MAP assessments for the 2013-2014 school year is $188,750. And the final item on the consent agenda is a request to renew our contract with CSI, also called Control Systems Incorporated, here in Hagerstown, for our automated temperature control management of our building environmental systems. And that contract would be effective for a additional one-year period through June of 2014. The total is $228,500. Does include picking up the new facility under that umbrella contract. That said, I think that concluded. I hope it was fast enough for everybody.
You were terrific.
Terrific.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to award the bids and/or contracts to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders for, staff likes to have them all read out, so I'm going to try this.
Absolutely.
RFP 2014-03 to Reynolds Consulting Engineers, bid 2013-02 to MTS Equipment, Zeris Wireless to Zeris, Inc., core router for WCPS Wide Area Network, Skyline Technology Solutions, teacher laptop computers, Hartford Computer Group, Inc., annual MAP licenses, Northwest Evaluation Association, and bid 2010-22 Control Systems, Inc.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Harchman, thank you for the second. And I believe she got them all. About your count, did she?
Yes, she did great.
All right, good.
Good job.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Bright?
The MAP licensing, about a 20% increase. Can you help me? We haven't had that many additional students enroll in the school system, I don't think. So, so it's a per license type of bid.
What happened there was, at the end of fiscal year 12, an order for about $39,000 had, was placed. So when I went, I went back in preparation for this presentation to try to provide some insights to you, in case we asked that very question. And what I learned was that, there were actually two orders last, that applied to the last school year.
They were broken apart.
They were broken apart.
So in reality, we spent-
It's about the exact same amount. I think we're shy of it, we're down like 40 licenses from what we actually bought last year, and some of the training components are, have been taken out, but the unit rates are the same for the site licenses. So that's sort of a, I apologize, that was really not clear, the way it was written on the cover.
No, that's a great explanation. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Williams?
I had a question about the laptops. Are these replacement laptops, or are these in addition to existing hardware that's being used by instructional staff?
Oh, great, Reynolds here.
Those are replacement laptops for teacher laptops that are six and seven years old.
So all over? Any particular place, or just wherever they're needed?
We go by age, age and failure rate. So it's touching many, many schools.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Item six under new business is the first reading to rescind policy BAA and exhibit Dr. Marko, Mr. Trotta.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, Board of Education members. On August 27, 2013, the Policy Committee conducted its public meeting, and it discussed policy BAA and exhibit BAA-E. Majority of the members of the Policy Committee have recommended that this, that this policy and the exhibit should be rescinded.
Thank you, Dr. Marko. Is there a motion to rescind policy BAA and exhibit BAA-E?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
I guess I'll start on this. I have very mixed feelings about this situation. It is a policy that exists, and I'm the kind of person that believes if you have a policy, you should uphold it. On the other hand, I also understand some of the reservations that many of my colleagues have about this particular policy. I spent a good bit of time this weekend on the internet doing research on evaluation of school boards. I, first of all, found conflicting statistics about what percentage of school boards do evaluations on a routine basis, and it's not necessarily yearly, but on a routine basis. On one site, I found 75%, on another site, I found 92%, but either way, it's a fairly high percentage of school boards. As far as looking at various associations of school boards, most I found that I went into recommended every year, but some of them said every two years would be acceptable also. I would like to offer a possible kind of a compromise. It would mean keeping this policy, but perhaps maybe making a change to the frequency. I tried looking at many specific evaluation systems that other counties, both in our state and outside, that other states use. And I was looking specifically for something that really addressed board-wide evaluation, something that did not go down to the individual member level, I suppose. And the one that I found that I thought would be the most helpful for our board, and also not take a great deal of time, is the one that Montgomery County here in Maryland actually uses. I printed off, I'm going to pass these out, just the first question on their evaluation. There are only seven questions on the evaluation. They deal, as I said, with the board as a whole. You simply give a rating for each of the seven, and a brief statement of your reasons for your support. This particular one has to do with establishing district visions and values, the one that I just passed out. After they're completed, one or two people could collect the results and compile them or summarize them, and then the recommendation on the directions for this particular set of evaluations is for the board to come together and have a discussion in reference to future expectations on continuous improvement, to advance the goals and interests of the school So I'm offering that as a possible, sort of a compromise, to what I've heard some of my colleagues say about this policy, and also, I guess, as a position as head of the, or as chairman of the Policy Committee. So I would like to hear if anybody has any reactions to this particular item. That's my spiel.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Are there other comments? Mrs. Williams?
First of all, Mrs. Fisher, I thank you for doing the research that you've done, and I thank you too for the attempt at finding a compromise and working towards that end. I would like to see something in more depth, something perhaps that would address the standards and the key works of school boards as established by the National School Boards Association. And my feeling is that policy BAA is, is not a bad policy, it's not an outdated policy. I would like to see us maintain a policy for doing an annual self-appraisal. I think that it would allow the board to examine its practices and its processes and operations, and I think that such, such an undertaking would lead to continuous improvement, and I think that it's important that we, as an elected board, model that, which we expect of others, and I think that we, we owe that if we want to have a climate and culture in which we're all striving for excellence and seeking continuous improvement. So I thank you for what you've put out there for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there other discussion? Mrs. Bright?
When I look at this policy, BAA, there are two words that actually give me pause, and the one of them is "shall," which I see as a mandate, I see it as a forced word that is not possibly reflective of any particular board at any given time. Also, the October 1st deadline, I see that as arbitrary. I'm not sure it's connected to anything in particular, and again, I'm not sure it's reflective of the uniqueness of each board that is elected by the citizens. I know as we go forward, we're going to be developing a vision and a mission for this board and for the county, and for education in this county for the next few years, in a work session, and I think that is, is really the valuable work of this board, is to look at that vision and mission, and see what we can do as a board to implement that, and those are the type of goals that I believe we've been elected to do. So I will be voting to rescind this. This is a first read, and we'll have a period of time before the second read, and I'm certainly open to reflection, as I know we all are. So, but again, I think the work that we have ahead of us on vision and mission will get us to the same outcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Bright. Are there any other comments or discussion? Mrs. Fisher? Just make sure that everybody else has their first shot. Mrs. Harchman?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just have a slight problem with the policy being rescinded, because to the best of my knowledge, as part of the Policy Committee, what we have been doing is going through the policies and combining or making sure that they're covered someplace else. I believe, and I'm not absolutely certain about this, that this is the only one that was going to be completely thrown out, with no respect to adding it to any other already established policy or any other place in the, in our group of policies. I think that the, the way this is wor- I think that the, the way this is worded, there's no problem with it. A policy shall be conducted because if it's a policy, it's supposed to be done. So it's, it is a mandate. Once it's a policy, that's what's supposed to happen. So I don't find any problem with that. As far as the date goes, I think that can be just any set date that the committee would decide or the board would decide. That's not a problem with the date changing. But to completely throw this out, I think just shows a, a kind of disregard for some of the policies that other Board of Education groups thought were important. And I will be voting not to rescind it.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman. Are there other questions or comments? Mr. Bailey, Mr. Ridenhour, who haven't spoken yet before we go for a second round.
I don't really have anything to say other than we have rescinded policies in the past. This is not something that is unique or is new. So I have no problem with rescinding policies when they become or get to a point that they're not accomplishing what the original intent of the policy was. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of people would like to say that being elected and answering, we answer to the public. The superintendent is not elected, teachers are not elected, administrative staff are not elected. We are elected. We answer to the general public every four years. They have an opportunity to tell us whether or not we have done those things, answered their desires when they go to the, to the polling places. And I've heard mentioned that the, the premise that elections are not legitimate because we have a staggered number of members. I would ask anyone to take a look at the history of midterm elections to get an idea of how important elections are to tell officials what the public wants. We've seen pell-mell changes historically during midterm elections and during presidential terms where the public has said, "We don't like the job you're doing. Consequently, we're gonna tell you goodbye." I have no problem with that. Absolutely no problem whatsoever. Every four years that I've been on this board, three terms, three times I've been elected, I have gone into those elections knowing that the public may not approve of my record as a member. If they do not and they determine that I have not done those things to do to merit this chair, I will accept that and move on. So, yes, I, you know, I do not buy into that premise. I do believe that we, as elected individuals, are different than everyone else that's employed by Washington County Public Schools. We answer to the public every four years. So I think that is an evaluation. That's the evaluation that I want. As far as a self-evaluation, I do that, as I've said before, I do that all the time. I think, too, what we have to take into consideration, we have a small board. We have seven members. If we continue in the, in this type of process as it has occurred in the past, it comes down to individual board members or groups of board members saying to other board members, "We do not like the way you're doing your job." And it, it points a finger at, and it is a reflection when criticism occurs. It's a reflection on those individuals who may have voted differently than other individuals. So I'm very uncomfortable with this. I've been very uncomfortable with it every time that we've done it. We have tried different models in the time that I've been on the board. I think it's time for us to move forward, rescind this policy and let the, let the public take care of it on their own.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour and Mr. Bailey.
Certainly like to thank Mrs. Fisher for doing the research that she has done and brought us a sample copy of the Montgomery County document. The board is, is embarking on a vision and mission statement that will have an abundance of public input into that mission statement. I could ask the President if he could give me a number on the different organizations and groups that would have input into writing that document. There must be 20 at least.
There were at least 20 that were solicited.
Yeah. So I think that's going to, to, to help us and recognize what our, our vision should be for Washington County and what our mission should be. And as Mrs. Brightman spoke to that issue, I, I too agree that it will, will help us to reflect not only our own views, but those of the community. And based on that, I will vote to rescind this policy. By the way, six of the seven items from Montgomery County are based on vision and mission. And we, that's what we're headed for. Six of the seven items address the vision and mission of the, of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Fisher, did you want to get back in?
I was just going to add to what I had said, I may be beating a dead horse here, but the other categories, the six other categories in the self-evaluation tool that I had proposed would be to develop and promulgate relevant governing policies, to monitor expected student achievement results, the responsible management resources, board operations, community engagement and communication, and building and sustaining an effective relationship with the superintendent. Although our vision and mission should always guide all our decisions, regardless of whether it's involved in part of an evaluation or not, I still think there are some different and yet very relevant items in here that, that should be considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. I'll just add very briefly that I, I find myself, I suppose, close to where Mrs. Brightman is. What bothers me in the policy are the words shall and October 1st. Without a policy, there's nothing that prevents us from doing a self-evaluation. Anytime that this board or any other board would decide that they wanted to do it, I don't like putting it on a deadline and I don't like the use of the word shall. So short of this discussion resulting in that being changed, I'm gonna vote to rescind the policy as well. I'll remind all members and I also wanted to say, I've talked with a number of you about this policy and I think we all are wrestling with it in many respects. I appreciate the effort that many of you have gone to to get us to think about this and wrestle with how we're gonna address this going forward. From a procedural point of view, this is the first read. The Policy Committee doesn't meet until September 17th again, which means second read would probably not come back until October 1st. So, you know, there is more time if, if other people have other ideas or might be able to craft something that could win a majority. But I'm gonna vote to repeal today. Are there any other comments or discussions?
I just had one, and I'm, I'm not sure that the interpretation of this is the same for all of us because I don't see any place in the policy that says each individual. It says the board as a whole, which is a self-examination of how the board has performed in different activities or on different occasions. And since we do hold everyone to evaluation processes, I find it difficult to believe that we should not be held to the same standard. And above and beyond everyone and everything else, I answer to myself first. So that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion to rescind policy BAA and exhibit BAAE. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes four to three and the student member concurs with the majority. Thank you, Dr. Marco.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask if there is a motion from my colleagues to rearrange the agenda to move recognition of outstanding positive behavioral, behavioral interventions and supports to be the next agenda item. We have a number of people who've come to be part of this and as exciting as our policy debates are, is there, is there a motion to amend the agenda to move that item up?
Some more.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion?
Are we sure that everyone's here that needs to be here?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Mrs. Brightman's motion to amend the agenda. Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. Dr. Wilcox?
We're going to proceed with this award. Mr. Burnett is here and he will walk the board through the recognitions and provide the needed introductions. As Mr. Burnett comes forward, who is Director Supervisor of Guidance and Counseling Services in the system, I want to note to the administrators, we can't dismiss until you get back. So as soon as you're done from here, you are excused. You don't need to stay for the stimulating policy debates.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the board and Dr. Wilcox. It gives me great pleasure to be here today and as we fill the room with schools that have earned very high recognition for positive behavior, interventions and supports. As known PBIS through the acronyms of education, we have actually reached some points within our system that the safe and orderly climate is really being recognized as being very, very effective based on the evidence-based, data-driven processes involved with PBIS. And with that said, I've brought some packets for you. Gives you a little bit more information on PBIS and some of the great work that all of our schools are doing. So you can read those at your leisure. But what I would really like to do is recognize the schools for all their hard work. We have had six schools earn recognition at the gold level, three at the silver level. And one of the things that's most impressive that I think is, we had a school last year, the first year of implementation, earned the bronze level award. So with that, I would like to give credit to two of our key leadership pieces as far as running the county-level PBIS initiatives, and that is Ms. Sharon Connolly, who's a school psychologist, and Ms. Julie Metheny, who is a lead counselor and also half-time high school counselor. So I'm gonna ask them to join me up here so we can provide the banners to Dr. Wilcox, that he may be able to provide those to the schools as we announce them. This is Cher and this is Julie. Our first school for recognition is Bester Elementary School, and they have earned the silver award for 2013. Our second school being awarded is Boonsborough Middle School, and they earned the gold award for 2013. Next, we'd like to recognize Pierce Spring Elementary School with a gold award. Eastern Elementary School has also earned a gold level award. Fountain Dell Elementary School has earned a silver level award.
And we brought both principals back for this one.
Right, we take, we take two.
A gold level award went to Pangboard Elementary School. And the first time school that I was alluding to originally was Ruth Ann Monroe, who earned a bronze award. Springfield Middle School earned a gold award. Western Heights Middle School earned a silver award. And then our final school is Winter Street Elementary School that earned a gold award. Just in closing, you all really should be congratulated. It's a lot of work. It really shows testament for all the great things that you're doing for kids, that you're establishing a culture, that you're allowing the kids to access the learning. So with that, just to close with another round of applause for everybody.
Thank you. It should also be noted before the, all of the principals leave that Kathy Forrest is here, who is the principal, Ruth Ann Monroe, but she gave the credit to her team because it's a new placement for her. Thank you for your leadership.
Next on the agenda, on the agenda is item seven under new business, which is consideration of the first reading of proposed new policy ACE, service animals in school. Mr. Trotta, Dr. Marco?
I'm sorry. I just had something in my throat.
Good afternoon. Federal law requires that a public entity is to permit the use of service animals by an individual with a disability. School staff recommended to the Policy Committee that they consider the adoption of a new policy entitled "Service Animals in Schools." The Board of Education currently does not have a policy on this particular subject. School staff advised the Policy Committee that it would be helpful to provide school-based staff with direction with regard to this particular matter. The Policy Committee is recommending the approval of the first reading of policy ACE.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion to approve policy ACE for first read?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of policy ACE, service animals in school on a first read.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion?
I thought we were gonna gallop right through this.
I thought it was interesting. It just said dogs and what, small horse?
Miniature horses.
Miniature. Okay, well, small miniature, yeah, pretty much. Nothing else. Can't have a bunny rabbit. No. Is that federal?
Let's not be nice here.
No, no, I'm just, I am curious because there are, there are children that have emotional issues that just holding any type of animal, you know, helps remedy. And I was just kinda curious, you know, when it said just dog or small horse that's, or miniature. Miniature horses.
Let's get it right, Mr. Wilson.
The, the federal regulation at this point just covers service animals, which includes dogs and miniature horses.
I was gonna say, I think the one thing that, you know, in all seriousness, the difference here is that these are not therapeutic animals, they're service dogs, which are lead animals.
Yes, okay. See, Saul won in action, it's pretty impressive. As a matter of fact, he walked the stage at this for a couple of years ago.
Baloo?
Baloo. Remarkable. Remarkable.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. I tried to make you giggle, but I'm sorry.
Had to get to the small.
Is there other discussion? Mrs. Williams?
I have just one question, and this may be best answered by our former English teacher members of the board, and that is the use of or in classrooms or at school functions. Would it be better to have that and so that it's reading in its facility, school buildings and classrooms, and at school functions? As opposed to these things or this instead? Just...
Perhaps and slash or.
Yes. So we'll come with that.
I have one question. Is there, you know, we didn't ask this, not that I recall, in the policy committee. In our effort to go through all of our policies and see whether there are some that are duplicative or that can be combined, is there no other policy that we have that this could become a part of or that would also cover what we're trying to cover in this policy so that we don't have to create a new policy?
We'll go back and look at that particular question, and then we can advise you prior to the second read.
Because if there's, I mean, I know we have policies on students with disabilities, so if there's, if there's some place that we can roll this into one of those, or even if one of them already covers, perhaps not in as direct a way as this does, maybe that's something we can think about to try to keep the policy manual as manageable as we can.
We'll do that.
There any other discussion? If not, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to approve the first read of policy ACE, service animals in school. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight under New Business is the first reading of revised policy IKD, honor rolls and graduation honors.
The policy committee has studied this policy, and it has considered the comments that have been offered as to whether the student with the highest grade point average should be designated as the commencement speaker at the graduation ceremony. The Board of Education's current policies do not address this specific matter. Majority of the members of the policy committee are recommending that policy IKD should be amended by providing that all high school graduation ceremonies will have a valedictorian and a salutatorian who will be allowed to deliver a commencement address. The individual with the highest grade point average will be selected as the valedictorian, and the individual with the highest grade, next highest grade point will be selected as the salutatorian. The principal is to set the time for the speeches and is to approve the speeches. In the event the student with the highest or next highest grade decides not to deliver a speech, the student with the next highest grade is to deliver a speech.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion to approve the first read of policy IKD?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
I know we still have an individual at one of their schools who's opposing this change. I would like to add that this does not stop any school from adding additional speakers to the list that could be determined in a competition or whatever device was created to do so, but it would give both the valedictorian and the salutatorian the honor which the titles imply.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Harshman?
I will be voting for this because I earnestly believe that this is an honor. It is not for entertainment. I think that graduation is an honor, and it's a time to recognize honors. It is not time for the best speaker or the best singer or whatever to come out and entertain the people in the audience. I think that if you have worked hard all those years to become the highest grade point average student in your class, you certainly deserve the honor of being permitted to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Breitman?
A question before my comments. In reality, even though we're discussing the idea of uniformity here, in reality, the decisions we make on this policy adjustment will affect Tech High. The tradition of the other schools, in fact, I think we've always, we as a board and school system have sort of left this up to the individual schools for their tradition, what mattered to their students, and I've always sort of, not sort of, I have supported school-based decisions whenever they made good sense. As we look to middle college, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, with HCC, that would be another unique arrangement where students are leaving their home schools to go to another experience, like they leave their home schools to go to Tech High. How would this possibly, what would this look like in a middle college type of, would things be, grades be weighted differently? How would we align with HCC and their, are they semesters, quarters?
They're semesters.
So just looking forward, so we're not having to change policies going forward with that, do you see any conflict with what's being suggested here with that middle college model?
Well, I'll offer a couple of thoughts, and I think one is directly on point. I'm right now, and we'll have to engage in staff, with staff between now and the next reading, but on a personal basis, I'm concerned about the equity between grades. When you introduce kids to a new environment, say they have their ninth grade and 10th grade year at a sending high school, and then they go to another institution, there are some real question. If you leave a high school where things are incredibly competitive and lots of course offerings, perhaps course offerings that are not available at a smaller high school, but you took that course and struggled a bit, maybe fell to an A minus, and then you now go against a student who has similar credits but in different courses than you because they weren't available to that, there's an inherent question of fairness that I think we have to be able to answer, because oftentimes these valedictorian decisions come down to hundredths of a point over four or five years of accumulated credit. And that said, when they come down that close, when is it that we recognize you as valedictorian? Do we do it with the mid-grading period, or do we wait till the final? My inclination would be, it would be the final grade if we move to something like this, which puts a little different pressure on some folks because teachers are going to have to get that grade recorded up in a timely manner, but with graduations sometimes three and four days away, I don't think it's problematic. What becomes a little more problematic are the graduation speeches, but I think you would handle it like this. I think what you would say if you were the principal at a school, I have five kids that are in the running. You're all within a thousandth of a point of each other, and you're all taking courses. These last few days count. These final exams count. And then we have to prioritize the grading and marking and forwarding of those scores, what means that the students have to make a decision about, I could be valedictorian or I could not be, but if I am and I'm afforded this honor by the board and the district, I have to prepare a speech. That's not particularly troubling to me because six kids writing a graduation speech is a good problem to have. The question is, will they? But I would think that most of these kids who want this honor would do that. So I have the two issues. One is the equity of the different grading systems between schools, and then when they enter an entirely new program, how does that aggregate up? And then the second issue is one of timing. If it truly is to award the student who has been most successful, then I believe we ought to measure their entire experience, not, you know, three quarters of their experience or three quarters and another fraction. So I hope that answers your question, but it...
It does, and I agree. In fact, I was going to ask my colleagues to give direction on regulations, which the timing of the calculation would fall under regulations rather than policy. So I don't know if that needs to be a motion. It sounds like you're already heading in that direction.
I think if the board provides direction, that we will recognize, number one, and number two, we'll have to talk about how to operationalize that, and it will lead to another series of conversations about how do we make sure that students have equity of opportunity across our schools? You know, how do we make sure that Algebra II is Algebra II wherever you take it, and it's as competitive? But those are problems that school systems should wrestle with, so, you know, if that's the will of the board to change the process, we'll react accordingly. The only other thing I would say is, there would be the possibility for this board to carve out the specialized schools and simply say this applies to our traditional high schools, but does not apply to our non-traditional high schools, and give us some latitude there to work with folks, and then we don't have to wrestle with that problem directly.
And then the other question would be, when would, whatever this policy winds up looking like, when would that take effect? We've already started the school year, our students already have a certain expectations of how the grade point average would be calculated and the timeline, and we do the second read first of November, end of, well, whatever that timeline, does that take us so far into the school year?
I think those kids who are in the chase, and I'm going to defer in just a moment to our student board member who probably knows more than I, but I know my daughter has kind of said, well, here's where I am in the race, and she knows. And I think kids then adjust themselves accordingly if they're in that race. I mean, if all of a sudden they call you and your class rank's 15, you know you're not going to get there, so you just do what you do. But if they call you in and you're one, two, or three, you're probably going to do something because there's money tied to these things, by the way. You know, there are a number of colleges that award significant grants if you are the valedictorian, and when it comes down to hundreds of points, that's where I, as a superintendent, want to make sure that you being the valedictorian, it's actually equitable, that your valedictorian award means something.
Mr. Grunendike's been chomping at the bit to get in.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's several different things that, on different subjects that people have said, and just to recognize Dr. Wilcox's most recent statement. The way I read this policy, it says the individual with the highest grade point average will be selected as the valedictorian, and the individual with the next highest grade point average will be selected as a salutatorian. I see that as you have the highest, not the highest, a month before school lets out. It's the highest. So, I mean, I guess the regulation is supposed to reflect that. And like he said, you know your class rank and you know whether you're in the running. I mean, I'm tied for second in my class right now, and I know what I have to do in order to keep that or move up if I can. We'll see how that all pans out, but I also know that at my high school, which is one of the high schools that draws from schools all around the county, that the valedictorian and the salutatorian are the ones that have the highest grade point average over their entire high school career. Just to give an example, my older sister, Ellie Grunendike, was the valedictorian of the class of 2012 at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, and she took in two years of high school from a high school in Iowa. Now, I think it's a slight change of scene from a small high school in rural Iowa to an arts school in Hagerstown, Maryland, and she was actually not able to graduate with highest honors because we didn't have honors classes, so she didn't meet that requirement, but she still had the highest grade point average. So she was able to give a speech as a valedictorian, and I was there, and it was marvelous, and I really enjoyed it, slightly biased source, but...
Which town in Iowa?
Sioux Center, Iowa.
You're not from Iowa?
Yep. And I know that everyone, like, the main question here is on Tech High School because they're the only school in the county that doesn't do it that way, but, I mean, I think that it's worked excellently at Barbara Ingram. I mean, we have four different departments, we have different floors. I mean, I'm not going to take the same classes as an arts student, but all those are still counted towards final GPA, but I still think it's justified because we each have our own area of expertise, and we're going to be graded accordingly in that area. If anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Just a couple of things. First, let me just go back a little bit. I think it was seven, eight years ago, perhaps, we had this same conversation, and surprisingly, it was the other way around. Our student representative at that time spoke equally eloquently in support of maintaining GPA to be the determination at his school for valedictorian, salutatorian. And I think what we're looking at, we're looking at tradition, you know, what is the tradition of your school? What's the tradition of the other school? What's the tradition for Tech High School? Now we are, and you can look at me funny, but now we're making a determination as to, are we going to tell one of our schools? I think that the bottom line is, are we going to tell one of our schools that your tradition is wrong? And I'm bothered a little bit by that. It has worked for them the majority of the time. I think last year may have been the first time that we've heard anything about it. To be very truthful, I did not know for certain how they did their graduation speakers. And that's what we're talking about, graduation speakers, you know, valedictorian just means farewell. So the farewell speech is given by, we're saying it should be given by the person with the highest grade point average. So, you know, I'm troubled a little bit that we're, you know, we're going to impose a uniform standard that tells one of our schools that your tradition doesn't work. So I'm not, I'm still struggling with this. Eight years ago, I voted to say, no, we're not going to change because that's what the schools, that particular school wanted. They wanted to keep it the way it was. Their students said, we want to keep it the way it is. I'm not sure how Tech High feels about it. I know you told me before our meeting that you are going to meet very soon with your whole group.
Yes, tomorrow.
You've spoken to some of your classmates. You're going to meet with the whole group, and perhaps, hopefully, before we have our next meeting.
Yep. We'll have the official...
We'll have some input.
The meeting.
I'm not looking necessarily for, okay, 15 people said yes, three people said no. I'm looking more for, how's the break down?
This is the elected representation of the entire county.
I'm looking forward to hearing that from you. I'm not sure how I want to vote. I do know that I agree with Mrs. Breitman, I agree with Dr. Hardings, or, excuse me, Dr. Wilcox. I believe it has to be at the end of the school year. I think in the past, we've had a couple of instances where someone gave the valedictory speech who was not, didn't have the highest grade point average, that they slipped in the fourth marking period and ended up being declined, several people. So a person that would have moved up into one of those two spots didn't get the opportunity. I think it has to be at the end of the year, and I have no doubt in my mind that our students who are in that position can put together a speech in no time and make it a good one. So I do think it has to be. Absolutely, I would not support it under any circumstance unless it is, you know, after the fourth marking period.
Mr. Bailey?
I want to concur with that, that it should be at the end of the fourth marking period, and I think that Superintendent said it, my colleague has said it. And in talking with principals, the objection that I've only heard, the only objection that I've heard to that was the turnaround time that it takes to get the grades processed at the end of the school year. Would we have that information in time? And also the printing of a program, putting the names in a program. Well, I think you can overcome the names of putting in a program if you have to even put a small insert. put a small insert in the program. So, again, saying, "End of the fourth marking period, quick turnaround on the grades and insert the names that are not already printed in the bullet," might solve the problem, part of the problem.
Mrs. Fisher, let's see. Let's see, everybody's had a chance to speak once, so we'll go to, if you had a chance to speak, Mrs. Williams, would you like to before we go to second round?
Perhaps, we'll see.
Okay. Mrs. Fisher, or Mrs. Harshman?
Okay. I taught at Tech High, and I was there when the tradition was to have the valedictorian and the salutatorian speak. So, the tradition was actually changed by the current principal. For what reason, I'm not positively certain. It's the only school in the county that does that, and I think that when you sign up to go to Tech, you should still expect basically the same situations that are held in other high schools in the county to exist in Tech. The other question is about the end of the year. Not only would there be no printed information in the programs, but I know that some of the grades come out right at the very end of the year. And it used to be that seniors got off earlier, and so consequently, their grades had to be in sooner. And so, you knew who was going to be valedictorian or whatever. You could have easily found out at the end of the year. But the way things are right now, everybody sort of gets out around the same time unless there are extensive snow days. And as a teacher of a 12th grade student, of 12th grade students, I would never have asked them to complete a speech in two or three days that was going to be given to the entire school. I don't think they would have felt ready for it. And in order for me to prove it, which would certainly be a good idea where the students are concerned, I would hope that the school would have someone who was going to go over what he or she was going to say so that it would have been approved, perhaps by the principal or perhaps by the teacher. But certainly, that would take some time. And I think at the end of the year, when you're hustling and bustling with everything else, it would be an impossible situation. However, if a cutoff date were established for senior grades to be considered for that, and the students knew what that cutoff date was, I think that would be just as easy for everyone to handle if a student knew that a week before, two weeks before, or at the intrums, that he or she had to have everything in line, and that's where you were. I don't see how anyone could argue with being valedictorian if you slipped at the end, knowing that that's part of the work world, which is what they will be in. So, I don't see either of those as being a reason for not allowing them to speak. And as I said, the tradition started out at Tech. When I went there, I was with the first group that taught academics, and it was done by GPA, and it was whoever was the highest from the time that we started graduating from Tech, which may have been a year or two into the actual academics. I'm not sure. I think, actually, I think we graduated the first year. But that's something to consider, and I think that they deserve the same opportunities that everybody else does in the other schools. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I was just going to ask a procedural question and see if there was consensus among the members, if you want to take consensus on whether or not the time limit, or the time for the grade determination should be changed now rather than proposing it maybe on second read? And then what if we don't agree on second read? What happens to the policy if we still want a policy, but there's issues amongst the members?
Well, we have eight weeks. If we approve the first read today, we have eight weeks to get it through to second read.
Why eight?
Because that's what Policy BF on policy settings says. I think it's BF.
All right.
That's what the policy setting, policy says, is we have eight weeks between first and second read. Otherwise, you have to start over. So, that's at least one, if not two, policy committee meetings and a couple of board meetings. I'm not encouraging us to take that long, but there's going to be plenty of opportunity to act on this. I'll just tell you where I am. I absolutely won't support it if it doesn't take grades to the end of the year. Two or three days, maybe a short period of time, but for these students who go to college and they go to their first English class and they got to do a paper that's assigned on Wednesday and it's got to be turned in by Friday, that's probably good practice for them. I also won't, I'll support the first, excuse me, I'll support the first read today, but I won't support the second read if it's not clear that it's the end of the year and if it also doesn't provide a grandfather period for any school that's already got a process that's in place. If the school's got a process that's in place for this year, I think that we, as a board, I would like to respect that. I don't think either of those is a ridiculous thing to ask. Any other comments? Mrs. Breitman?
Just trying to be logical, I guess, on how to proceed. My thought is that it would be helpful on first read if I move to give direction to the superintendent because the timeline for calculation of grade point average and when it would take effect are all under regulations. So, I believe we, as a body, I think it would be helpful to staff and the superintendent to see where this body is on that, and it would help them gather information for the second read. So, with that thought in mind, I will move for this body to give direction to the superintendent on the, I think the wording in here is next to last official grade report, and I would just strike next to and say last official grade report. And that occurs twice in the regs, so it would need to be addressed twice as well as a, when would this take effect? And my motion would be, hmm, next year?
2014, 2015.
2014, 15, I think, would be a valid date. So, those, it's a two-part motion. If somebody would like me to sever that, I can...
And that's a motion to give direction to the superintendent?
Direction to the superintendent.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Is there, I hesitate to ask for discussion. We've been discussing this for quite a while. Is there anything that needs clarification?
Can she just repeat that?
Yeah, what she said, please. I move to give, for this body to give direction to the superintendent to change the timeline for grade point average calculation to the last official grade report, and that it would take effect in the 14, 15 school year.
Okay. Everybody clear on what the question is?
Now, is that without any research on how that could be accomplished, correct? I mean, that's just the motion, period? I just want to be sure when I'm voting.
That's the motion, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. All those in favor of Mrs. Breitman's motion to give direction to the superintendent? All those opposed? Okay. The motion passes six to one with the student concurring, student member concurring with the majority. So, we return now to the original motion, which is on the first read of the policy. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor of the approval of the policy on first read? Any opposed? Motion passes six to one with the student member concurring with the majority. All right. Thank you, everybody. Next is consideration of the first reading of Policy Manual's Section A policies.
Thank you. The Policy Committee conducted a comprehensive review of Section A of the Policy Manual, which is entitled Foundations and Basic Commitments. The primary objectives of the Policy Committee were to update and to streamline the policies in Section A. Based upon its review, the Policy Committee is offering the following recommendations. With regard to Policy AA, entitled School District Legal Status, the Policy Committee is recommending that this policy be rescinded because it's already covered under Maryland law. With regard to Policy AB, entitled Citizens and Their School District, the Policy Committee is recommending that the first paragraph in this policy be deleted and that the remaining sections be placed in Policy ABA. Accordingly, Policy AB may be rescinded. Policy AEA is entitled Goal Setting. The Policy Committee is recommending that this policy be reworded so that it more clearly sets forth the process the Board of Education is to follow when it sets goals. Policy AH is entitled Accountability. The Policy Committee is recommending that this policy be rescinded, but that the language which appears in Bullet Number Six be placed in Policy AEA. There are three separate and distinct policies which involve community involvement in decision-making. The first is Policy ABA. The second describes the role of school staff in policymaking. That is Policy ABB. And the last concerns the role of students. That is Policy ABC. The Policy Committee is recommending the following actions. That Policy ABB and ABC be rescinded, and that the entire content of these policies be incorporated into Policy ABA. They are also recommending that the title of this policy be changed to read Stakeholder Involvement in Decision-Making. Moving on to the next policy, that's Policy AE, Board Goals. The Policy Committee is recommending that this policy be rescinded because the content of this policy is covered under Policy AEA, which is entitled Goal Setting. And finally, Policy AGA, entitled Recognition for Accomplishments. With regard to this policy, a minor wording change is being recommended in Paragraph Number Three that makes it clear that the Board of Education will officially recognize internal and external programs that reward achievement. In closing, the Policy Committee is recommending that Policies AEA, ABA, and AGA be amended, and they're recommending that the following policies be rescinded: AA, AB, AH, ABB, ABC, and AE. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion to approve the changes in policies?
Mr. President, I move to approve on first read revisions for Policies AEA, ABA, and AGA, and the recisions of Policies AA, ABA, AH, ABB, ABC, and AE. Well, stop there.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Breitman?
I know this has been a long discussion in policy, and I don't mean to stretch it out, but I, just a couple questions, or I guess of the Policy Committee on AEA. It seems to be just sort of sitting out there without a lot of connection to or from other policies. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out why it was left here and what the end game is. When I look at, the Board of Education should carry out its mandate. Well, our mandate is really given to us, our authority comes from the education articles of the state of Maryland, of COMAR. And basically, if I look at the list here of the items, we make policy, COMAR mandates policy, but not setting priorities. It mandates budget, but not planning of programs. We've rescinded BAA, at least in the first read. Is periodic evaluation self-evaluation? Is it superintendent's evaluation? Is it? And if we're rescinding, if we rescind BAA on the second read, that pretty much takes that out of the list. Accountability, we're asked, being asked to rescind AH, which is the whole accountability piece. Are we substituting this? I don't know if I'm making more of this, but if somebody can give me some background, it seems rather disjointed.
I think much of that discussion also took place at the Policy Committee meeting where they did examine Policy AEA, and the committee was inclined to retain it. So, I would merely refer back to the Policy Committee members with regard to your question because it's really an issue for the Policy Committee to decide.
No, it's been a little while since we had this conversation as a Policy Committee, but my recollection is we were taking out so many of the other policies that talked about things that the board does or that we're responsible for, that I think there was a feeling that we didn't want to go too far in taking everything out of the Policy Manual that talks about what our responsibilities are. There's two other members here, but that's sort of how I recall the conversation going.
If I may, I believe we said something about, because there've been some other policies we've been working on that we've said that, you know, well, that's in COMAR, or that's in the state regulations or whatever, so why do we have to repeat it in policy? But I think part of the argument was that the citizens who read, well, if they read the policies, it's much easier for them to read the policies and find out what we're supposed to do than to try and sort through COMAR, the law books, to figure out what our duties are. So, we kept this one.
Could I suggest then, maybe instead of the goal setting, could we then say, maybe retitle it to Duties and Responsibilities? It just seems to make more sense. And then actually pull our duties and responsibilities from COMAR and our best practices, and maybe lead off with a vision and mission, which is sort of what I think triggers all of these other, just a suggestion.
We have two other policies we are holding specifically until we do come up with our new vision and mission because they are directly tied to those. We could perhaps put this on hold with those other two. I mean, it seems kind of foolish to use the vision and mission we have now if we're in the process of changing them.
Exactly so.
If the will is to hold this one, it could be a motion to amend the motion to remove this policy and send it back to the Policy Committee.
I will move to do that. Send back AE. Move to send AEA back to the Policy Committee with the suggestion that it be reviewed along with the other several that may connect to this.
Okay.
It's vision and mission.
I'm sorry, you can't make that motion, Mrs. Breitman. Somebody else has to make it for you since you made the original motion.
I did, thank you.
Would somebody else like to make that motion for Mrs. Breitman?
I thought I made it. Sending AEA back.
No, you're right. I'm sorry, Mrs. Fisher did. I wrote, you're right, you can make it. So, somebody needs to second it.
You can second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. So, is there any further discussion on that policy? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Mrs. Breitman's amendment? Are there any opposed? Okay. The amendment passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Sorry, too many initials down on my sheet, keeping track of who's doing what. So, we're back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion? If not, the question is on the first read of the rescission of the policies and the modifications to the policies. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. All right. Next on the agenda is personnel action. Dr. Marko? Ms. Francisco?
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed in closed session, I have for your consideration our teacher-staff changes today.
Is there a motion to approve the teacher-staff changes recommended by staff?
So, move.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the teacher-staff... All those in favor of the teacher-staff changes? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student member abstains. Thank you, Ms. Francisco. Dr. Marko.
As discussed in closed session this afternoon, I'm bringing forward administrative personnel actions for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Marko. Is there a motion to approve the administrative personnel actions recommended by staff?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. Thank you, or student member abstains. Next is Reports to the Board, West City Elementary School Site Concept and Alternatives. Mr. Michael.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, the members of the Board. Several months ago, the Board reviewed and approved the schematic designs for the West City project. And at that time, you asked us to take a look at a variety of layouts for West City. Of course, the initial layout is what we're referring to as Concept A, is proposed by the architect. Shortly thereafter, we had three concepts, Concepts B, C, and D, that were submitted to the Board for further consideration. At this point, we had an additional request, and we had a fifth layout, the possible layout for the West City design, put together. And today, we're requesting that you discuss these items, providing additional direction you might have for us to provide additional information to the Board for further consideration on these five layouts or any other layouts that you may have in mind. As part of your package today, you've received advantages and disadvantages that the architects identified for each of the layouts. They may or may not be an all-inclusive list, and we may discover other advantages and disadvantages as time moves forward, but we'd be glad to entertain any questions you have about that. Mr. Rollins is very quickly just going to run through the five concepts and highlight a couple of the key advantages and disadvantages of each. Rob?
Thanks, Mr. Michael. As Mr. Michael mentioned, Concept A was a concept that was brought before the Board previously. Some of the advantages of it, again, are the orientation of the building and the east-west orientation gives the best orientation for optimal daylighting. You have a separate bus loop from the parking, playfields at the rear of the property in a secure manner. Although the Board did raise some questions about the bus loop being on the front and whether that was confusing in terms of where the main entrance of the school was, it was a good comment. And we always continued with the issue, although we endeavored to solve the issue of the service drive being crossed by pedestrians. Concept B moves the building to the south, slightly down closer to Hager's Crossing Drive. And the bus loop moves from where it was on Hager's Crossing Drive around to be accessed from Buell Court, one way in. And the service drive also is accessed right there from the bus loop. It's a similar orientation to Rockland Woods, if you've ever been to that school, with the bus loop on one side and the parking on the other. Again, we maintain separate bus loop. We maintain the building orientation so that we have the best natural lighting. This option eliminates the need to cross the service drive in order to get out to the field. So that might be a plus. The main entrance also may be better defined with the bus loop over here rather than in the front of the school, so that when folks come around the circle, it's maybe a little more obvious where the main entrance of the school is. Playfields to the rear and in a safe, secure area, but they are a longer distance from the school, and that might be something to think about. Some of the other things to think about with the bus loop over here on Buell Court, it does bring traffic onto Buell Court that wasn't there before with the previous design. And there are some slight site development costs that would be incurred because of the grading that we need to be done in order to get that bus loop over there off of Buell Court. Concept C moves the building all the way to the north side of the property and rotates it 90 degrees. Playfields then move down and are right along Hager's Crossing Drive. This design, like all of them, maintains the separation between the bus and the parking loops and the drop-off loops. Eliminates the need to cross the service drive in order to get to the playfield. The service drive now comes off the parking lot in the back of the school there. And I think in this option, the main entrance to the school is very well-defined as you approach it. Some other things to think about, the building orientation running north-south doesn't give you the optimal daylighting. You'll get some fairly harsh sun in the morning and in the afternoon, especially in the winter months into the classrooms. It could cause some glare and stuff that we try to avoid, which is why we try to orient the east-west as much as possible. Bus traffic, again, is going to come around on the residential street. Site development costs are going to increase, again, because of the grading needed to do that bus loop. We think we have some fill up here that we have questions, or we know we have questions about it, but we haven't had time to go out and actually drill and bore and find out exactly what we have in the fill out there. But there could be some issues with the fill on the site out there that could cost us some. Extending utilities further across the site, your water shoe or things like that, costs a little extra. And we feel if we're down here with the playfields, that we need to put a fence around them between the roads and stuff to keep the kids and balls and things from running out into the street inadvertently. So, and also with the playfields down here and the school oriented this way, they're about as far away from the gymnasium and cafeteria as you can get. Option D, Concept D, again, goes back to the original orientation, but pushes it toward the south and east corner of the school property. This allows the bus loop and the parking lot to be on the same side. Pretty obvious coming on segue where the main entrance is. I think that's a good site. And it eliminates, again, the need to cross the service drive to get to the playfields. Service drive would have to come off of Buell Court. That's an additional cost in getting the grading and getting it into there, which, instead of being just a spur off of the parking lot or the bus loop. In this option, something to think about is the distance of that parking lot from the main entrance of the school. It's pretty distant. We ended up having to move the handicap parking in off the bus loop to keep it close. It's a pretty good hike for everyone involved in drop-off. The service entrance is, again, off the residential street, and the site development costs are going to increase. But pushing the site to the east, we're going to need a retaining wall along here and then the grading for the service drive. Finally, Concept E was one that was brought up by a Board member, and so we were happy to take a look at this. Again, the school is on the south-east corner, but it's oriented in a north-south direction, so we have the issues with the daylighting there. But it does maintain a separate bus loop and car loop. You have lots of stacking area, so that's a plus. You may have confusion about where the front entrance of the school is. The front entrance is facing away from, completely away from Hager's Crossing Drive, and folks might have the same confusion that they did on Option A with the bus loop there. And then there's, of course, some site development costs, especially this, another retaining wall to get this service drive in there. The gymnasium is oriented away from where the playfield is. And I think that's about it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, is there any discussion about the five concepts? Mrs. Harshman.
I have a question about Concept D. In the bus loop, there's some kind of little indentation, and because these are all so very small as far as the writing goes, I can't tell what that is.
Right there?
Yes.
Get that handicap.
Okay, is there a possibility, if that were the chosen plan, to put more parking there for, like, visitors? In other words, if someone comes in just to drop something off or to bring something into the school, is there any possibility of putting additional parking on the loop? There is, at not too much cost? Also, is there any possibility of moving the parking lot any closer? That at least keeps the parking lot out the front of the building, which I think is definitely a plus and gives the school a better look when you pull in. And the drive loop that goes actually to the front door on this one seems to define it a little better than most of them do, but I am concerned, as you said, the parking lot is quite a distance away from the door.
It's difficult in this scheme to move that parking lot to the south. It may be a bus loop would have the amount of stacking that you want in it. You still have to have room for stormwater and the thermal fields and all sorts of things. And we could look, of course, these are still concepts, so.
Right.
To say, me to sit here and say that I cannot move that parking lot one foot would not be truthful on my part, but it is a little bit more difficult on this option. I think you're always going to have a certain bit of more separation than you do on some of the other options in terms of how close that parking is to the school.
Okay, and then I had a question on B, Concept B.
Sure.
And that one has the parking lot coming out in the front. That is the front door, correct? I get a little, I get a little lost in some of these where the door is.
That right there would be the secure vestibule entrance near the main.
Right. So it would be sitting, like, within the parking lot? The cars would be parking across in front of that?
Yes.
As opposed to a drive?
Right, the car, the drop-off area would still follow along this line right here. The cars would enter the parking lot and leave the parking lot.
So the, so the drive is through the parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
There'll be cars parked on both sides as someone drives in the loop?
It's pretty much the setup we have in most of our schools to stack the number of cars that we have for parent drop-off. It's showing a pretty lengthy line now. So we use, we use the parking lot for the kind of cue the cars up in the AM and the drop-off in the morning and the pickup in the afternoon.
Is there any possibility of that parking lot being moved farther away? From the front, from the very front of the building? Keep the loop, but move the parking lot a little bit out of the very front door of the building?
We're trying to, well, no, it's a good question, but we're trying to economize the amount of pavement we put on the site. So there's all sorts of things that impact. For one, it just costs more to have more pavement, so there's an issue there. Two, it costs more in stormwater to deal with more pavement. The more impervious hard surface you put on a site, the more you have to deal with that water.
Right.
And build stormwater traps and things like that and convey the water in a way that meets all the regulations. So again, I guess we could, I just don't know that we can without spending extra money that we don't have. And I, you know, my goal is always to put as much money into that building.
Right.
And that educational environment, so that's why you see some of these compromises.
Right.
I understand, they are, they are compromises, and I understand your thoughts about cars in parking lots and blocking somebody from being able to back out. We've probably all been there, but.
Definitely.
But it's, it's a compromise.
Some of those moves, I think, start to affect some of the ball fields and things like that as well, so we just have to kind of balance the site with, you know, how much green space we're going to have and things.
On the Concept E, what is that farthest away from the building, that long, narrow?
Right now, we don't have anything shown there other than we have land, but I imagine it would be converted into playfield. Once we, if this was an option, it was chosen to be used, we'd flesh it out, and we might not end up with exactly that amount of lands. But whatever's out there, it will be green space, trees, or another playfield, another community, things like that.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Mrs. Brightman?
How about a vegetable garden? Moving on. If you look at, when I look at a blank piece of paper and trying to decide how to design whatever the project is, it's sort of that balance between form and function. And I know we're just talking outside of, outside right now. We haven't really fleshed out what the inside's going to look like. That said, the footprint of the building will somewhat drive how that building functions in the inside and how, so I guess if, and don't shoot me, if we sort of erased everything and took all the elements and said, in a perfect world, where would the parking lot go? And does it need to be one massive parking lot? Could it, would it make sense to separate it somehow? Where is the absolute best place for the bus loop? Where is the best or, in other words, trying to, instead of all of us trying to put blinders on and trying to identify pieces of the elephant based on our own biases or whatever, what actually makes sense for all of these elements to go in? And then how does that drive the interior of the building? And just to sort of bring it down, for instance, the decision between a one-story building and a two-story building. And going back to math instruction, which I hesitate to do, but I will. A second or third grader who is testing at a fifth-grade level on math, and because we individualize and differentiate our instruction for each child, and we want to give that child as much opportunity to reach his or her potential, we would like maybe that child to be included with a fourth or fifth grade class. I'm just making this up. They are not allowed to go up to the second floor to, because of fire code, a second grader cannot go up to the.
I thought the issue was EGRIS when we spoke earlier, so.
Well, maybe.
I'm trying to look at the usage of that building and what do we gain or lose with the first one-story versus the two-story.
I believe in a, in a.
You got to come to the mic. Well, it's not for us, it's for TV.
It's the TV.
We'll go, we'll go back and look at what it specifically says in the NFPA codes, but based on past experience, I believe, because it's a commercial building or an educational building, I believe there is a, some age limitations on, on students being able to go up to an upper floor or, you know, a lower level. We'll need to look and see exactly what that age limit is.
My guess would be, though, that if a classroom, if a second-grade classroom was intended to go, or a first-grade classroom intended to go on the second floor, a whole classroom, that would be something that the Fire Marshal would take a hard look at, say, and, you know, the code states that certain age groups. I think if you're sending ones and twos, I don't know that it's an issue. Aaron will look into it, but I think if the intention, if the intent of the code is that, I don't want to permanently house my four first-grade classrooms on the second floor. If I've got a brilliant first grader, I don't think that's going to be an issue because they're going to be taken care of with the rest of the crowd. Now, I'm speaking off the top of my head. Aaron will definitely go back and check, but my feeling is that that seems like a more logical approach to how that code would be applied.
I'd have to see exactly how the code is written about that and how it applies.
Okay, and the point I'm making is with the new instruction and Common Core and that, going forward, education's going to look very different. Then the building has to reflect that, or it's going to fail to support it. So I'm just trying to be sure that we're not applying a certain structure that we're comfortable with. Schools have always looked like that, and I want to be sure we're trying to align, that's all. And I'm back to my, you know, is there a better place for these elements? And then if we give the design team those first choices, parking lot needs to be here because of whatever, and then that's where the design, is that what has happened in the past? Is that how we've come up with these concepts?
That is how we've come up with these concepts. And so what you see in each concept is, is our attempt with the building in any given position, how best do you arrange those other elements around that building in order to achieve those things that you need? So I mean, yes, I think we've gone through that process, and this is where we landed.
But I think, Rob, it's happened in reverse. The building has been roughly laid out, and then the amenities are laid out around the building. I don't think we generally start with where's the best place, parking lot.
Well, that's just one of five or six elements.
But it didn't start that way. When we started, you don't know what the building's going to look like, and you have all these elements, and you're trying to figure out where they all go. So where we landed is where we thought, from a staff standpoint, what we thought was an effective approach.
And there were several different options of the actual footprint of the building?
Oh, yes. Yes, the architect can speak to the number of times we sent him back and try again, try again, try again, please try again. There were one-story options, there were two-story options, and we looked at many different things, absolutely.
Is there any, and I don't know my colleague. Is there any, and I don't know, my colleagues may not be interested in this, but between the schematics of the site plan and the design documents, where we start actually looking at the building itself, what kind of flexibility do we have? Right now, we're looking at this shape. If we start looking at the design documents and want to maximize certain elements going forward, is this going to limit that discussion?
I think our intent is at the next board meeting to ask the board if they would decide on a layout. Also at that meeting, we'll bring a preliminary DD stage, design development stage of the building in block form. You know, here's roughly what they're looking like for the office area, for classroom areas, for the media center, those types of things. That could yet be rearranged in any order if the board chose to go in a different direction. I think that input time is, is quickly coming. I mean, I think we've done this process different than any process we have in the past. As we recall, back in January, we were going to approve the Ed specs and then we delayed that. We got input from the architect and we're continuing to seek the board's input and we welcome any input or direction we have. But it's time to get that direction, I think.
Rob, do you have some of the early architectural offerings? You mentioned that we went back and forth once. Do you have some of those early iterations that we kind of considered?
Yeah, I think we can dig some of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you, just to help the board see the process, that's not to say that we're not going to, you're not going to do something different, but I think it would help them to see some of the back and forth. Also, some of the raw feedback that we got from the Ed spec development. I know we have a, kind of a prioritized list of things that the teachers and principals and others thought. Maybe just have Chad put, because I know Chad kind of guided the tour around. Maybe some of Chad's notes for the board. And then if there were any particularly innovative things that you thought early on from the firm's position, if you'd provide those to us as well?
Sure. Ms. Ridenham?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Rob. Thank you guys. I think sometimes five is so much harder than one. And I, I keep looking and trying, you know, I'll look at one element of it and say, I like this, and then look at other elements and say, oh, this really is, you know. I think the one that bothers me the most is if we put buses on Buell Court. And I'll tell you why, so that my colleagues would understand my apprehension. If you take a look on Buell Court, you, you have a significant number of townhomes abutting that. Kids are going to walk from there. And, you know, no matter how hard we try, sometimes the kids aren't with their parents or with an adult. They're going to take the shortest route. And that shortest route's going to be right across that, that road. So that, to me, that's problematic. You mentioned the other thing, the lighting, a couple of times, that we wouldn't have the optimal lighting. Does that have any impact on our lead certification if, if we do make adjustments, you know, that don't get the amount of lighting that would be often?
Pick up lead points.
Lead points, we get lead points, I think, for lighting?
We, we get lead points for a certain amount of lighting in, in a certain percentage of the, of the overall classroom spaces. What becomes difficult with changing the orientation of the building is how we treat the daylighting so we, so we get the proper amount in the classroom. And so by having the classroom wings oriented east and west, you get the most even daylight.
Right.
And so it becomes a little bit more economical on how you control that daylighting.
Sure.
When you orient to a north-south axis or, or anything other than, I think it's roughly 12 degrees north or south of the east-west axis. Then there's different ways that you have to start to control the daylighting and they become a little bit more costly in with the building design.
So Aaron, or whoever has the pointer, if you, if you look at that, show the, the wings that are laid out there next to Buell Court, they're bent really at 12 and a half degrees to help take care of that. That's why that funny shape is there rather than a long flat wall. I say that more for the, for the public who's watching. The other issue is, please don't forget that we're going to be putting, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of technology into these rooms that depend on our ability to control daylighting. So on one hand, we want to earn the credit for using daylighting. On the other hand, we have to control for it. So it's not just as simple as, oh, we'll pitch the building this way.
And it's not impossible to have a north-south orientation.
No.
It's just, as Aaron said, you have to put more controls in place. So now you're spending money on stuff other than.
The space itself.
The space itself. It's not impossible, it's just.
I mean, I'm looking at, I only see, what are there, two that do not have, you know, the increased traffic on Buell Drive or Buell Court?
Right, which is A and.
A and. Okay, thank you, thank you guys. I mean, that, like you said, that, that really does concern me.
Ms. Fisher?
Going back to this stage, I don't like the building, but that's neither here nor there. Part of it is because I think the front entrance should face Hager's Crossing Drive. And the only logical way to do that is put the parking lot in front of it. And of course, we've been asked not to. So I went back to the drawing board and played around with moving things all over the place. No matter which way I moved it, it didn't come out any better as far as advantages and disadvantages. So in my estimation, we should stick with concept A because first it is most, is the most cost-effective. The disadvantages are minimal and one of those, one that says the bus loop could cause confusion, I think could be alleviated simply with some signage. It does answer the plan, or is it the planning and zoning that made the request for the parking lot not to be in the front? And that said, I, I just think there's no contest that the concept A, especially considering the advantages and disadvantages, has to be the selection.
Any other comments or?
I just, um, concept A still gives me the concern of the kids crossing the maintenance area and the loop, which we didn't like. B kind of takes both of those things away, which I think, or D, I'm sorry, which I think is good, but it also places the parking lot far, far away. Which I don't know if the loop in D could be moved down, down a little and the parking lot moved back. Excuse me. Anyway, if D, if the loop to, for drop off and bus could be moved down a little and the parking lot moved a little more toward the front, but not right in front of the front door.
I think, you know, these, these options were done, were done fairly quickly and responsibly. And I think that, and that's okay. It's a.
I'm just thinking.
I think that if it was a wish of the board to go to, to move with that concept, then of course we would continue to refine and see if there were ways to do those sorts of things we talked about. Whether or not we can pull it out to a satisfaction that's as good as, as maybe some of the other options, I don't know. But, you know, we would continue to refine it absolutely, any of these options.
Sort of like everyone else, I just really, I don't, I don't know. There's nothing that really jumps out as this is definitely the best way because each one of them seems to have problems, so that's where I am.
Any other comments?
Can I just ask a question? What is the, you know, there are a number of these disadvantages that talk about increased costs. What are the costs?
Yeah.
You keep talking about grading. Are we talking 20,000, 50,000, 500,000? It's hard, it's, it's very hard to evaluate really what we're talking about without having at least a, a guesstimate of what the numbers might be.
As it, it is hard to come up with a number because we're still in this stage. However, I think that at a minimum, maybe on like option B, that might range anywhere from 50 to 100. Whereas an option.
Which amortized over the 50, 50-year life of a high school, or of a school is.
You still have the money, have the money to build a school.
Sure, you still need to, right.
Uh, concept C, I think, probably would be the one that would give me the most pause in terms of putting money into it. And I think that one might run, you know, maybe 120, 150. So I think if you had to take it in aggregate, anywhere from 50 to 60 up to 150,000, depending on which option you took, that's sort of the ballpark we're looking at. And, and don't hold me to it because we're going to find things as we go through.
And how much, how much cost is involved in reconfiguration of median at Hager's Crossing Drive due to abandoning the existing entrance?
That's talking about probably having to put a concrete median extended from the circle a little bit further. I don't know, Dave, 15, 20,000 dollars? Somewhere in that range, 20, 25.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. I mean, I.
I'm sorry, I can't get you the exact number.
No, it's, it's good to know if, if we're talking tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars.
We're not talking millions. We may be talking in the, in the, between 100, 150, depending on what.
That's, that's helpful.
So how do you size parking for a facility like this?
Uh, we size it, there, there are, there are codes that say there has to be a certain amount based on the occupancy. And we also look at how much staff we have. And I think our Ed spec calls for what, 100? You know what it is, Chad?
Well, the, the real reason I asked the question is because when you look at a lot of these, what really eats up a lot of space is the impervious surface, the parking. Yet we have right next door to it a community center. Perhaps this would be a great time to strike up a partnership with the city of Hagerstown and say, we would like first right of refusal or access to that facility during that. Because it, it appears that while we might have 40, 50 staff members there, we have significantly more parking than that. Maybe there's a way for us to reconfigure parking with a multi-use group. And that would provide some other options for us then in terms of place surfaces and other things. Now, you know, I don't want to build a building from the DS, but that is something I think we can think of because when I look, for example, at A to B, the only real cost that I see is the median and the changed bus location, but yet you get all the other advantages. And yet you could perhaps recapture some playground space if you could, in essence, kind of look at parking using overflow at the community center. And again, that's just a thought.
Right, one thing that. Yeah, the HOA is.
Or through the HOA. There's a perceived value of having a school within the, the pod.
The, also, the parking lot sized with, within that core space, we're, it's large enough for a five-round school versus what it would be for a three-round school.
Yeah, I just don't know.
Oversized. Even if we didn't build the whole parking lot based on not needing the staff, we need to leave space and plan our stormwater and all other pertinences and drives for it. We could leave it grass right now, but we'd still, in the end, want to have that many spaces for a larger staff and visitor load.
Yeah, but we'll never have 150 staff persons there. And if I look at this, it looks like there's about how many spots you have?
I think there's what, 120?
120?
This is true at every elementary, we'll never have enough parking in that elementary.
Well, not for an event, but, you know, I don't think you size things for the exception. You size things for the expected, the norm. And then you deal with the exception. And if the exception could be done through some kind of negotiated agreement with the homeowners association, then perhaps there's an opportunity for, to create a win-win-win. But again, it's not fair for me to do that from the DS. But it's something we should probably talk about, as I've listened to the board members talk.
I'll say, I, I like concept B. I don't like the lollipop, go-kart track looking thing in front of the school. I just don't. I don't like the way it would sight to the street. And putting buses on Buell Court, I, I hear Mr. Ridenham has a concern, although, I mean, if you, if you are near Bestor at the time, you get students walking to school, there's a whole lot of cars driving around there and they're not school buses. And frankly, I'd, I'd rather have school buses because I, I know how careful our drivers are. I wonder what the ratio of the number of speeding tickets they get with the, with the camera, bus drivers versus regular drivers. I'm, I'm sure the regular drivers get a lot more. So I, I think that can be managed, but you're right, that is definitely a concern.
Developing, one of the orig, or early concepts of B was to have an entrance and an exit, two accesses from, to and from Buell. And we cut one out and made it a, you come in and out of the same entrance to speak towards exactly what Mr. Ridenham was talking about.
Well, staff's here looking for direction. I heard Mrs. Fisher clearly say she likes concept A. Mr. Ridenham has concerns about traffic on Buell Court. Mrs. Harshman has concern about A because of the students crossing the service driveway. So where does that put us, Mrs. Williams?
First, thank you for asking a question about how much of an increase for some of these. I too like concept B better than I like any of the others, but that's not to say that I'm sold on concept B. My question is, when you say, looking at the disadvantages, and I'm looking at concept B, when you say increased distance from the building to recreational fields or the staff parking is located further away from the building entrance, this is so tiny, I can't use the scale. Can you give me a rough idea? Are we talking six blocks? Are we talking 20 feet? Relatively speaking, how far is the, is the staff parking from the entrance of the building, say, on concept B?
Out toward the end of the parking lot. I mean, of course, obviously this stuff is just as close as it is in concept A.
Right.
I hear you probably are talking about 50 or 60 feet further out.
Okay.
Aaron, is that probably Dave? You can see from the. Parking lot's almost in the same place, but the, the school has moved closer.
Okay.
And then the playfield, it's really just the movement of the building itself. I'm sorry. The hike out to the, to the playfields in, in B is just a little further by the movement of the building. Probably 70 to 80 feet, you know, so.
It's not a half a day hike or anything like that?
35, 40 yards further. No, it's, it's, it's not huge, but sometimes it can make a difference to an instructor, just that extra little bit of time.
Absolutely. So you'd say 70, 80 feet, something like that? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other direction we need to give, Mrs. Fisher?
I would just say that I appreciate Dr. Wilcox asking the design team and our staff to bring maybe some other concepts that have been discussed. The next meeting is what, in two weeks?
Yeah, there, there may be the.
Progress report.
Yeah, what we may have to do is look at scheduling some other kind of meeting that we would publicly announce and let some of our board members who have a passion for this come and kind of talk with us and the design team because clearly in a traditional setting like this. But I, I really want to say to the board, this is, and this is no reflection on our earlier discussion of service animals, but we kind of got to giddy up here a little bit, or we're going to miss out on the funding cycle. So if you will let us kind of talk tomorrow a little bit about the possibility of setting up a time for us to talk?
You know, I'm looking, and I have no problem with Dr. Wilcox. I'm, are there, I mean, are there enough, is there enough of a consensus to go with A, B, C, D, or E right now? I mean, I have no problem, I've listened to what Dr. Wil, or Dr. Harding's mentioned about Buell Drive. I can live with that. It bothers me, but it's not something that's going to throw me into a tizzy to a point that I can't support, you know, concept B. I like the fact that it, you know, that it comes out to.
We can work off concept B and come back with something.
I'm fine with concept B and allow the group to, you know, do what they do. I don't know how we do it. I mean, I, if we look for a consensus with any one of these, if, if, I need, we need a motion for me to, I'll go with.
You know, I don't, I don't think the purpose here is to do a motion.
No.
Really just to.
But I think.
Give direction tonight.
I'd like to see us get to the, they have something to work with so as Dr. Wilcox says, we don't get down to the last week and we're still not sure what we want to do.
So let me, let me see if I can capitalize that. Right now, there is at least a growing appreciation for concept B. But if there are some opportunities, then within that layout, to provide perhaps some more visionary space within the building, this. this board would like to see that. So, we basically have the orientation that we're looking for, and now BFM, along with our team, has to really talk about, do we have the best building in that orientation that we can possibly deliver to our kids? So now we'll go back and kind of headache through some of the designs that we rejected, make sure we have a good rationale for that, we'll take a look at kind of optimizing the spaces overall. Is that fair to this board?
I think that captures what we heard.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And thanks to the, both teams for your flexibility and your understanding, because I know this clearly is a different process for all of you.
Next item is board member committee reports. Mr. Grunendike, anything from student government yet? You can meet tomorrow, right?
Yes, student government will meet tomorrow at Washington County Technical High School, and I'll look forward to talking to students from all the high schools and middle schools around the county about this graduation, the graduation honors policy, and especially students from Washington County Technical High School.
And what, what time is that meeting?
It is at 9:30 in the morning.
Great. Mrs. Harshman, curriculum and instruction?
Curriculum and instruction met August the 27th. Supervisor of, for pre-K through 12 science, Sandy Graff, presented information on the next generation science standards. She shared the standards that linked to three areas, which were scientific and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and disciplinary core ideas. And we also had Mr. Phillips, who is supervisor of enrichment and CTE, which is the business courses, presented and updated the information on the business curriculum and Financial Academy, and he shared four pathways, business management, accounting and finance, marketing, and administrative services that could lead to careers in business. And we will have our next meeting on September 17th at 12:45 in the board conference room, and the agenda will be posted prior to that.
Thank you, Mrs. Harshman. Mr. Bailey, finance?
Committee met on August 27th very quickly. The fourth quarter budget adjustments, you've already acted on that today, and at our next meeting, well, at that meeting, the committee meeting, we saw the budget calendar for 2015, and that will come before the board next time, and we had a progress report on the 403B, 457B plan, adjourned following that.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Policy committee also met on August 27th, and we discussed and worked with all the policies that we've already dealt with today in this meeting. We went on to work on policy BHD, which has to do with board member compensation and expenses, didn't get finished with that, that's carried over, and our next meeting is the 17th, which is not our usual Tuesday, it's the third Tuesday, instead of the fourth Tuesday, and it will be from 9 to 12. We're doing a double meeting that day.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, Mrs. Breitman, facilities?
Facilities did not meet in August, where our next meeting will be September 24th at 10:15 at Western Heights.
Mr. Ridenhour, human resources?
HR met, our HR committee met, let's see, August 27th. The items up for discussion were processes and procedures for digital signatures, discussion about revision to regulations to hire coaches, and finally, an update, received an update from our transportation department in regards to, in particular, the buses and bus drivers and other things surrounding it. And we will meet again, it's the 24th, at 8:45.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Anything from MAVE Legislative? Or from MAVE conference planning?
Not at this time.
Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion of proposed state discipline regulations for students. As board members, I'm sure, are aware, at its July 23rd meeting, the state board voted unanimously to approve with amendments, student discipline regulations for publication in the Maryland Register. The timeline for public comment and final approval includes publication in the register on September 20th, followed by a 30-day comment period ending October 30th. Final approval by the state board is scheduled for its December 10th meeting. Some of the large changes that, or significant things that are included in the proposed state discipline regs include definitions of expulsion, extended suspension, long-term suspension and short-term suspension, requirements to provide comparable educational services to students who are excluded from school, 45-day requirement to hear any appeals regarding discipline of a student, and that includes if the student, if you have to go to a hearing examiner, makeup work requirements, recording, reporting requirements for school arrests and referrals, and a mandate to address disproportionate and disparate impacts of students' discipline on minority and special education students. Question for us today is whether we want to, as a board, take a position on this, to provide comment during the period when it's open in the Maryland Register, what those comments might be. As I said, we have until October 30th, so we can decide to take a position today, we can decide to take no position, we can wait to see what MAVE does, we can wait to see what PZAM does, and then decide what position to take. Today is really just intended to be the start of the discussion. So with that as background, I will open it up to any discussion.
Mr. President, I would like to see the staff who will be required to implement many of these provisions react to the policy and come back with their reactions to what will be on their plate as a result of this.
And to add to that suggestion, Mr. Bailey, thought of having this discussion today, in my mind, brings me back to the PG discussion of last year, where a major issue almost got ahead of us in other organizations, and the idea concerned with education, and the idea was to try to reverse that and come up with a process, and I use the discipline regs from MSDE as an example, that we as a board could reach consensus on certain points. We need to do that, so when we meet with our delegation before they go to Annapolis, which hopefully would be October, November, I know it's a tight schedule and we're working on that, but in the interim, I think particularly with some of the new concerns listed on page two of our papers here, it might be helpful to come up with comments under the president's signature, our signature, whatever is the will of the majority, to actually talk about the reality of cost. A letter that would say, this is what it's going to cost local boards, that we need to be sure that we remain focused on safety, that whatever we all decide on, I think it would be helpful to write our comments during that 30-day period. I think the more school systems and districts that do that, and I know PZAM has been at these meetings, MAVE has been at the meeting, at all these various meetings, I think it's important to offer our comments in writing. That would be a suggestion.
Okay, there are other comments or suggestions?
I'll just say that I think Mr. Bailey's suggestion was a very good one. It's been a while since I've been in the classroom, so I would like to hear from staff what impositions this is going to put on them. My personal concern is with the last bullet, but I also agree with Ms. Breitman that we need to get these in writing, we need to do it in a timely manner, and safety and cost are two real concerns.
And just to add on that new issue of concern, we would need to provide appropriate behavioral support services. Right now, our MOU with Meritus does not include mental health services, they cannot provide for children under 12, so we're in a situation, this is just one example, of how we would then need to find and have some partnership with a mental health provider if this stays in the regs. So we're looking at some, many, many direct and indirect impacts. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying we certainly need to be aware of this.
We need to know what the direct impacts are before we can make a decision to take a position.
Correct.
I think that makes sense. Anybody else? So is there consensus to ask, I know there's some things in here that we already do, probably wouldn't have much cost, there are other things that we don't do, so I think, is, let's see, is there consensus to ask staff to, or ask Dr. Wilcox to prepare for us information on what the costs and direct and indirect generally would be for our school system? I don't think we're asking for a 10-page report or anything, just some, some idea from staff of what the, what the burden would be placed on them in order to comply with these regulations.
That's what I had in mind.
Is there consensus to do that? Okay. And then, once we receive that, we'll continue the conversation either at the next board meeting or at the first meeting in October.
With the knowledge that we'd need to have a letter before October 30th.
So there's, there's time.
Thank you.
And thank you for pushing us to consider this early so that we do have that time to get the information we need. Anybody else have anything else on that topic? We'll move on to future agenda items. At the next meeting in September, in addition to discussing the budget calendar, quite a few bids that we'll be considering, there's another discussion of the West City site layout. We'll also have an IB, a report on IB, International Baccalaureate Program. This is going to start our next series of academically focused reports to the board. We had the park discussions at a number of previous meetings, now we're going to have an IB discussion. Following on that will be the results of AP from last year, the results of SAT, and there's one other one that's escaping me right now. But those are all going to be stacked up in the meetings coming forward in the next couple of months. On October 1st, we'll meet with the Board of County Commissioners to discuss with them the fourth quarter budget adjustments, and then in October, October 1st, we'll have the HR report, the AP report, and as I discussed with my colleagues, we're working on a date to meet with the delegation to discuss, or we're working on a work session date for us to discuss legislative priorities in advance of our meeting with the delegation. Anybody have any comments or any other suggestions on agenda items? Mrs. Breitman?
I think we may need to have another public discussion on school start time. That seems to be something that our local lobbying coalition and certainly our comptroller seems to feel passionate about, and we probably, I think it's building some degree of momentum, so I think we probably need to discuss it as a board and decide where we stand on that.
Agenda discussed today?
Right, we did discuss that in agenda planning today, and our thought was to include that as a topic of discussion in our work session on legislative priorities, since they can't change anything until it goes to the legislature, which would be in January. So if we worked that as part of our, take a position on it, that we could let our delegation-
And the only other one, and it may be somewhere here and I missed, that I think after a public comment at our last meeting, there was some discussion about maybe reviewing the magnet program in general, so I don't know if that's still on the radar.
It certainly is now. Anything else? All right, board member comments? Mr. Grunendike?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Mrs. Harshman?
Nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Bailey?
I have nothing either, Mr. President.
Mrs. Fisher?
Nor do I.
Mrs. Breitman?
Said enough already, thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour? Nor do I. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work today, and declare the meeting adjourned.